Can I have a motion to go back into public session?
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good evening, welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for April 26, 2021. We please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for our armed forces and those in our community of the lost loved one, especially the father-in-law of Maria Pace and the father of Gus Egan. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Um. We are going to go to public comment on gender-related items only. Is that, did you get anything sent in to you?
No, I did not.
Okay, we will have a public comment for non-public gender-related items at the end of the meeting that will be live. We're going to go on to the superintendent's update.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good evening, everyone. It's terrific to be with our board. It's terrific to be with our community again this evening. Just some updates that I'd like to share and there are several items that I will include in this evening's update. The first is a congratulations to one of our high school students, Ryan Vogel. Ryan was selected to participate at a student-led town hall meeting on underage alcohol use. And that was in conjunction with the Westchester County and Coalition for Drug and Alcohol-Free Youth. Such a terrific achievement, such a terrific thing for our community to celebrate that Ryan was included in this event. And not only was he included, he played a prominent role in the evening. So we're really proud of Ryan. The couple of other additional updates that we're going to speak to this evening. This evening, I'm going to be recommending a calendar amendment. Our, there are several things here at play. I'm going to be recommending in light of the fact that the state testing has been reduced to one session, Math &amp; ELA. So we're taking the additional days and those are instructional days. Regents exams at the secondary level have been reduced to four Regents exam. So the remaining time is instructional time for our students. We, as many would recall during the snow days and inclement weather days in the winter months, our faculty and staff and just my commendation first as an aside to our faculty and staff have been unbelievable in putting students first. I say this often, I'm so proud of our teachers and so proud of our staff and everyone who works in our school buildings. Their commitment to our children is unbelievable. During those inclement weather days, we took snow days on the front end, but we had remote learning days on the, on the second day, if it was a consecutive event. So we took fewer snow days than we typically would take. And this evening, I'm going to be recommending a calendar adjustment to the Friday prior to Memorial Day. So that's Friday, May 28th, I'm going to be recommending that we close that day. We have so, and obviously May 31st in observance of Memorial Day that we close that day too. From April 7th until the end of the school year, there are no scheduled days off outside of those two schools, those two days. Friday, May 28th and Monday, May 21st. It's a long run between now and the end of the school year. We're down to the final nine weeks. I can't believe we're already in the fourth quarter and we've started the fourth quarter. So to this point, it has been a long 31 weeks of, of school, our faculty and staff and our students have done a, done a superb job. Their resiliency always inspires me and the flexibility and adaptability of our parents has, has been nothing short of remarkable. And their continued support is so appreciated. So I'm going to be recommending, just like many of the districts in our region, most districts in the northern Westchester region have opted to amend their calendars for a school closure Friday, May 28th and Monday, May 31st. I'll be doing the same this evening. So I present that to the board for their consideration. Just a couple of other updates. There was guidance that came out from the Westchester County Department of Health. Excuse me, my camera's sideways. There was guidance that came out from the Westchester County, I'm sorry, the New York State Department of Health that talked about, well, we can lower the distance from six feet down to three feet. We can remove the barriers. We can do all kinds of changes. At this point, the biggest implication on our school district has been the fact that we have to have lunch at six feet. That's a, that's a bit of a change for us. We were going to go a little closer than six feet for lunch. That's no longer the case. The children are separated by six feet. That did have implications on our gym. We have put up some tents outside. We have a tent outside of Crump Pond. We have a tent outside of the middle school. We have a beautiful tent outside of the high school in the courtyard. The students have already begun petitioning me to keep the tent in place moving forward. They'd like to see that as a permanent fixture in our school district. So when the students ask, we certainly are sensitive to our student requests here. So we do, we have added some outdoor space. In addition, we have not removed the barriers at this point. I'm not suggesting that that will be my stance on this in June. What I'm, so what I'm simply saying is at this time, right now, we've had our children back for a week in grades five through 12, a little bit longer in the other grades. Let's live with the barriers for a little bit. Let's see how those work out. There is merit to having the barriers for large particles specifically. So our, or in our conversation with the Department of Health and our conversation with our medical director at this time, we're going to keep the barriers. It's a different position for every district based on their unique circumstances and their ability to distance from them in the classroom. My concern and my focus is on this district and our district and based on the study that we've done, we're going to maintain the barriers for the time being. We're going to give time for the numbers to continue to come down. I'll speak to the numbers in a minute. We're going to give time to re-acclimate students into the classroom setting. Now, we have more students physically present in a classroom each day. So we're going to be studying that, looking at case transmissions. We did have an increase in cases at the high school level. What I will tell you is that the exposure happened prior to us returning all of our students. So to, I would not suggest in any way that this was related to returning additional students because on the first day that we returned additional students, we had already seen some cases pop up and some individuals were already quarantined prior. So I just want to clearly clarify that for people. We do have a dashboard on our website. We update the dashboard once a day in the morning. We post cases to the dashboard. There, there's a pretty intensive process that happens when we learn of a case. So we confirm that it is in fact a positive case. We work through the quarantines. We identify who the individuals are. We notify the individuals. Now with vaccinations, it's another layer of research that we have to do in addition to researching whether someone was COVID positive in the past 90 days. We communicate with the Department of Health. After that is done, the final step in the process is to post the case to our website. There are other really, really important steps that we have to do, like verify the case, notify the people who are directly impacted by the case and communicate with the Department of Health to ensure that we've met the reporting requirements that they have. That happens for every single one of the cases that we have. So I, I share that with you just from a process piece. At this point, we're, we're monitoring all of the students who are on quarantine. We do have upwards of 160 students who are quarantined. That's reflective of the numbers that we had in November and December of students on quarantine. We, and I, I think I've said this since the beginning of March, maybe even late February. As we return more students back to school, we can expect more quarantines to happen. We have students sitting between three and six feet. When there's a case that happens in the class, anyone who's within six feet is going to have to quarantine. The quarantine rules have not changed. What's changed is we're putting more people within that six-foot radius. So that, the fact that we're at 160 quarantines is high. It's higher than I'd like to be. But when I think about, we were at this number with, on a hybrid schedule with an A-day, B-day model. And we're at this number now with the vast majority of our students back learning in person. It, it, I, I can't tell you that we didn't talk about this in previous meetings and in previous updates. It's something that, that I think we anticipated. I, I certainly did share it with our school community and we're going to work through it. And the children are masked in school and we're pleased that the precautions are being followed. So I will keep you updated and I will keep you apprised of the situation. At this point, we have two dashboards that are going where you can check cases. Believe it or not, the cases on the state website were a little higher than what we actually experienced. Our website locally in the district is more accurate. It's more accurate because we can control it. So if there's a case that's repeated on there, we can remove it. If there's a case that not, not reported, we can report it. On the state side, we've inquired on how to adjust the numbers and there just is, is no answer being given back to us. So it's not always 100% accurate on the state end. We report all the information. But for one reason or another, not every one of the cases gets there. Some of the cases are counted twice or three times. And there, there's just not that level of granularity that we have access to on the state dashboard. Our dashboard has everything that we're aware of. And I also want to recognize that we're not aware of every case that happens in the school district. There, I'm sure there are cases of students that, that we may not know. Maybe it happened over a recess and we were closed for a week or closed for a week and a half. So those are the realities and that is one of the limiting factors that we certainly have. So I share that with you. With regard to just a couple of other items here. The board is considering, at least I anticipate the board considering moving back to in-person meetings at, at some point in the near future. What I wanted to share with the board and with our school community is at this time, that's not really a possibility because we don't have a videographer. So you, you all remember Keith and Keith, Keith did a great job for us for the time that he was with us. He's taken a job with, I believe it's the city of White Plains and he's moved on and we wish him well. So actually, this is the perfect platform to share if anyone knows of someone who has an aptitude for videography. It's not an easy system to operate. There, there are, when you have 10 different microphones that you're working with and, and we're looking to keep a live stream. I've heard from many parents that they enjoy this format of meeting. Childcare is out of consideration. They're able to participate multitask simultaneously. So I've heard some good feedback. So we obviously want to learn from this experience and incorporate it. But at this point, if anyone happens to know of a videographer, there's a posting on our website. We are paying $40 an hour for the service. It, it is a technical skill and a technical service that, that we're looking for. Again, it's $40 an hour, generally Monday evenings, five o'clock until about nine o'clock or so is when the board is here. And as I was looking at that, I, I was just inspired by the commitment that this board makes attending the meetings because I didn't realize that that's such a long commitment that the videographer is going to have to make generally every Monday or every other Monday and around budget season. It is every Monday. So if anyone is interested, there's a link on our website. It's $40 an hour for the videographer position for Board of Education meetings. I know the board is eager to get back to in-person meetings. We certainly are as an administration to get back to in-person meetings. We, we just need somebody to operate the camera, set up the microphones and set up the room and then take down the setup and store the equipment in the evening. So again, if, and if you can't find the posting on the website, send me an email and I'll make sure that we match you up with the posting. So that's, that's just an update on the in-person meetings and the videographer situation. We have had a posting out for several weeks. We just have not had any responses at this point. The, I also want to speak about the budget for a moment. At the last meeting, the board adopted the budget. There were additional state aid monies available to the district. And what we did was we used those monies to bring down the tax rate because we as an administration and certainly as a board are really sensitive to the taxpayers in our community. And we also took the opportunity to add some social emotional support for our students because we're equally, if not more sensitive to the student needs in our district. So right now, the budget stands, the tax rate increase in Yorktown is at 0.97%. That is what we're proposing. It's well within the tax cap and it's all posted, all the presentations, all of the supporting documentation is posted to our website. If you go to www.yorktown.org, at the very top of the page is information on our school budget. It's completely there, fully transparent, everything for you to review, including all of the presentations that were delivered. Also, on the ballot for May 18th, the budget vote is May 18th, Tuesday. It's always a third Tuesday in May. May 18th, it's at French Hill this year. We just thought in the interest of safety and the board had a lengthy discussion about that at a previous meeting in March. The board had a discussion about being sensitive to our students while providing our, and our staff, while providing our community with an accessible location to vote. And we decided that French Hill, I, I included pictures in our presentation. We went out, we looked at the space to make sure that it was adequate for voting. We determined it was. So the vote has been moved this year only to French Hill, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. There is plenty of parking there. You're in and out quickly. So it's going to be in the cafeteria of French Hill, but there will be plenty of signage directing you to the voting location within French Hill and that's on Baldwin Road here in Yorktown. On that ballot, in addition to the budget vote, there's another proposition that authorizes the board to withdraw $4 million from the Capital Reserve Fund. The, the majority of that project is going toward the renovation of the high school gymnasium. And the high school gymnasium is so much more than an athletic space, more, more than an athletic space. It's a physical education classroom. And beyond that, we use it for the arts and, and we have already talked about other ways that we can use that space because it will be air-conditioned and heated and it will provide our community and our school community with just another great resource and another great venue for our children. Voting to authorize the withdrawal of those monies from the Capital Reserve Fund, I just want to make clear, does not impact the tax rate. So the vote to withdraw has no bearing on Proposition 1, which is the tax rate. The tax rate will not change whether you vote yes or no on the withdrawal. The monies are already there. They're sitting in the Capital Reserve Fund. We need voter authorization to deposit monies into that account. We need voter authorization to withdraw the monies from the account. So this is the next step in that process. And I really commend the board for the forward thinking that they have in establishing a Capital Reserve Fund because it eliminates the need to borrow and all the fees and interest and legal fees that go into borrowing money. So it absolutely is a very forward-thinking way to be able to maintain our physical plant, maintain our facilities so that our children are experiencing the learning in a facility commensurate with the quality of instruction that they're receiving. So that concludes what I have for my report this evening. We went through many items tonight. I, I thank you for your attention. At this point, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Ron. Just. I just wanted to clarify something because I believe the monies are being released. This year, we're actually going to be released for work we're going to be doing in the 21, 22 school year, which would be the air conditioning. We're doing the 2021 summer, this summer is the gym, which the board has already authorized prior. Am I correct or did I misunderstand?
That's correct. That's correct. Yes. And I misspoke. I appreciate the clarification. So that's for air conditioning of large instructional spaces such as the gymnasiums, the cafeterias. Yep.
Right. Because one of the things with, why, reason we're asking for the money now for the following summer is the state does not authorize us or allow us to do any work in the design or anything until we can prove we have a source of funding. Is that correct?
Absolutely. And yes, I, the monies for the gymnasium are already secured. That was voted on previously. So we do need the monies this go-around, have the money in hand so that we can go outbid the projects for the HVA systems, HVA C systems in the larger spaces in the district.
Thank you. I just wanted to be clear. All right. All right. So we're ready to move on to board reports. We're starting with the Audit Committee, Rashmey.
So we don't have any updates at this time. We should be having some updates as we get closer to the end of the year. But as of now, we're good. Thank you.
Mike, Fiscal Advisory.
No new updates. We met just prior to the last meeting and we'll probably meet close to the end of the fiscal year again in June.
Policy, Cheryl.
We last met on March 25th and we were able to review six policies at that time, which we continue to work on and we'll be meeting again tomorrow morning.
And then for steering construction, the gym started today. They laid more light down on the floor to protect the floor. So that's a good sign. We're getting our summer work started. And the Steering Committee has been meeting weekly for the last, I don't know, six or seven weeks between working on the gym project and details of that, as well as going through the IVR Building Condition Survey Plan and going through all those details. And we just continue to move forward. So that's the update for that. Going to go to board action items. I'm going to start with minutes. A motion to approve the minutes for the April 12, 2021 meeting.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A motion to approve the Treasurer's Report for March 2021.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Claims order reporting, motion to approve the claims order report for March 2021.
So moved.
Motion to approve. Wait, all those in favor? I'm sorry.
Aye.
Okay. A motion to approve the extra classroom activity for March 2021.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
A motion to amend the 2021 school calendar.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Personnel, a motion to approve the personnel resolutions A to D as stated below.
So moved.
And those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. And then personnel, I'm on recommendation of the superintendent, a motion that the following be approved. Your certified personnel, we have appointments, part-time and temporary appointments. Addition to the substitute list, we have coaches and co-curricular volunteers, correction, resignations for the purpose of retirement, resignations under classified personnel. We have appointments, temporary appointments, substitute additions and substitute list and removal from the substitute list.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ron, did you want to say anything? We've got a bunch on here.
A couple of acknowledgements. Our retirees, we have some wonderful CTAs who are leaving us this year and they will be missed. Our, our CTAs in any year have an extraordinary and profound impact on our students and on our program. This year especially, they have been remarkable. I also, we're in the middle of hiring season and we're hiring some wonderful, wonderful candidates and, and some are included this evening. These searches that we have performed have been unlike any, the intensity of the searches have been unlike any search that I've been part of. We have, and I think our team would agree this with this, this associate has been very closely connected to some of the searches. We have had the opportunity to have several meetings with candidates, to have several interviews, performance tasks with candidates, multiple performance tasks. In some instances, full committee is getting together to make selections. Our process has been certainly more intense. We've always had an intense and always a very rigorous, rigorous process. But I think the candidates will tell you that they're spending hours with us before being appointed and recommended to you, which is something that Zoom has certainly made more reasonable and more possible for us where we're able to schedule candidates and meet with candidates for a longer amount of time through Zoom and schedule more candidates and schedule candidates at, at creative times that may not, would not have worked under other circumstances. So as you see any candidate being appointed, I, I will share with you that our candidates are coming to you through a most intense and rigorous screening process where they've met with us at least three times, in many instances, four, five or six times, multiple interviews, multiple performance tasks and multiple hours with us. So I thank the committees. First of all, I know it's not easy to serve on the hiring committees, especially not this year. But I'm really confident that the products of our work and ultimately that is the staff who we hire will make valuable contributions to our school district. This process has been remarkable. And so Shay, do you want to add anything about the process?
Just want to. I know you thank the staff, Ron, but you know, our building principals are really working diligently to make sure that we have the best people in place moving forward and they really get the process going. And, and Dr. Hatter and I participate at certain levels of, of the, of each of the search process. And, and I'm just so happy with the, the level of candidate pools that we're getting for each of our positions and the opportunity to really look for the best fit for Yorktown moving forward. So it's a busy time, but the outcomes are, are very much in line with where we need them to be for what's best for Yorktown students moving forward.
Thank you. Business office. Motion to approve the following contract for health and welfare students provided to resident pupils attending non-public schools in other districts for the 2021 school year. And this is for Lakeland and Tarrytown.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolved, I'm recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education, approve the contact with Glen Island Harbor Club for the Yorktown High School 2021 prom.
So moved.
Discussion. Ron, can we talk about prom?
Yeah, absolutely. So we're looking to have an in-person prom with our students. The location is, is noted here, Glen Island Harbor Club in New Rochelle, New York. We're able to, by having our prom at a third party, we have to follow the rules that are in existence at the time. Right now, to attend an in-person event at a catering hall, the requirement is that one of three criteria are met. You either test negative and produce a negative test result, 72 hours for a PCR, six hours on a rapid test prior to the event. You produce proof of COVID positivity in the past 90 days or proof of full vaccination, which means two weeks or more from the final dose. So we're approving this, or I'm actually, I'm asking for your approval of this contract under that understanding. We all know that this is changing quickly. So at this time, the requirements are a negative test, proof of vaccination or proof of being positive in the past 90 days. There are certain parameters that we're going to have to put on this event. It's not necessarily our desire to put these parameters in place, but we will follow the New York State DOH rules. Those rules were released a couple of weeks back. We're getting clarification on some of the details. I understand Mr. DeGeneres has been in contact with the senior class and will continue to be in contact with our senior class. But as of right now, we do have to secure a venue if we wish to house our prom anywhere but on our campus. And many districts are looking to do the same thing. So getting out early to be able to secure a venue is really important for us because there is very limited availability at Glen Island. We were fortunate to find an evening where they did have availability. It is a midweek event. event in late June, but we 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 do need to secure the venue. But we will be in communication with parents of the requirements to attend, and some of the other safety precautions. We consulted before bringing this to the board. We consulted with our medical director. We actually had a conversation, I had a conversation today with a member, a doctor at the Department of Health, and and spoke about this in a little more detail. So there are additional protocols that will be in place. This is just a request to hold the venue so that we don't lose it to another school.
Do any board members have any questions? And then I'm sure you're going to keep us updated as the state updates on rules and regulations that seem to change weekly.
Yeah, if anything changes, I certainly will share that with you.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the budget transfers as listed below?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A motion to approve, the President of the Board of Education is hereby empowered to execute an agreement with Ara's Contracting Company, Inc. to provide a district-wide capacity study. Total value of the contract is not to exceed forty-five thousand one hundred dollars.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A motion to amend the Daniel Coletta Dedication Scholarship Fund to include eighth-grade students at the Middle East Stray and Yorktown High School seniors. Middle School Award will run through June twenty twenty-three. The High School Award will run through June twenty twenty-seven. An award of seventy-five dollars will be presented to three eighth-grade students, one from each team who exemplified the characteristics listed below. A scholarship of five hundred dollars will be awarded to graduating seniors, your high school seniors, who exemplify the character, all the characteristics as listed below, and.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Can I have a motion to approve the following Yorktown Congress Special Improvement Program listed below?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A motion to approve the following placement as of April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Gifts, grants, and donations. A motion to approve the following gifts, grants, and donations with gratitude at Yorktown High School. Sixteen dollars from the Black Bond Giving Fund for New York Life, your cause, from the employee matching payroll, payroll match program. Two hundred dollars from Diana Michael Belcheck for the John Venezia Memorial Fund. That Kama Imperial Drum Set with Malini's symbols from Buster Only and Family for Yorktown High School students. And the middle school, a hundred dollars from the board trustees individually for the Danielle Coletta Scholarship Fund.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're up to public comment. Is there anybody in attendance who wishes to speak? You can speak live if you raise your hand. Nope, okay, we're going to go to board summit. Lisa?
No, I'm good. Thank you, Jackie.
Mike?
Well said. Thank you.
Rashme?
I'm good. Thanks, Jackie.
Cheryl?
I'm good, thanks.
And so am I. Ron, Tom, Lisa? And I, oh wait, I want to say one other thing. One of the other benefits to having the vote at French Hill, that room is air-conditioned, so all of those four poll workers are going to have air conditioning for once in the vet. It's have a benefit. All right, and I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Thank you all. Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.